Julian, what do you see? Like it's blowing at her?
Justin, literally.
Oh, we're full board tonight. Hi, Justin. Hi, Bruce.
Good evening, you heal.
Hello, everybody.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Justin.
Oh, what we have the pleasure of here. Let me look at my agenda.
No board member. Okay, I think, Ali, we have a quorum. I think this Khaneh is here. This is Sable. Justin, Bruce, and me. One, two, three. We only have four. Okay.
I'm stepping away for two minutes.
Okay. We need a quorum anyway. I'm Mr. Kisho. How are you?
Good evening.
Mr. Rosenbaum, I keep muting you because we're getting background noise from you. I believe we're just waiting on one more board member. I'm expecting Mr. Meyer any moment. We have a new call-in user whose phone number is ending in six, seven. Can you identify yourself just for future reference? We have a call-in user whose phone number ends in six, seven. We can't hear you if you're saying anything.
Same muted, Ali.
No.
I'm gonna call Mr. Meyer, make sure he's coming on. Okay, Jakey's logging in as we speak. So we should have a quorum, a minute or two? Mr. Sable, you back?
I believe Mr. Sable is on as a phone call so that he can listen while we are starting until he gets back to his desk.
Okay. I just want him to confirm that he's listening to it, to make sure we have a quorum.
Okay. If you're there, we just want you to confirm that you can hear us.
Ali, Khaim isn't twice.
Yeah, one, I think, is logged into his desk and one is a separate.
Okay. That's why you said he's in twice. Okay, thank you.
And there's Mr. Meyer.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Sable, are you there?
Hi, I'm here, Jakey.
Okay, hi, Jakey. Thanks for coming on. And Mr. Sable, are you there? Then we have to wait till we get a confirmation from him.
Okay. I'll let him know I was texting him.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay, Khaim, you're back?
I am back.
Okay. Okay, so I will call the meeting through order. Let's rise, salute the flag. Julian, we have the flag up. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ali, could you please read in the certification of compliance?
The time, date, and location of this meeting was published in the España Park Act and our ledger included on the bulletin board in the office of the County Commercial in 48 hours in advance. The right to attend this meeting and reasonable comprehensive minutes will be available for public inspection if we meet the criteria of the open public meeting.
So you roll call?
Mr. Garfield. Mr. Stern. Sorry, I muted you, Mr. Stern.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Sable. Mr. Plantzow.
Here.
Mr. Herzl.
Here.
Mr. Renner. Mr. Isaacson. Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Mr. Ratic. Mr. Puente. And Mr. Ackerman.
Okay, thank you. Swearing in a professional, Julian?
Can you please raise your right hand, or professionals, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Finalization of resolutions. Ali?
Yes, we have four resolutions on tonight. Mr. Sable was not here for the first three. And for the next one, Mr. Plantzow was not at the public hearing. The first one is SD 2443, major subdivision.
Okay, I would ask for a motion.
So move this, Justin.
Just move. Do we have a second? All second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'm table abstaining for all four of them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Number two?
The second one is SP 2396, major site plan.
Motion. Over motion. Just to move. Do we have a second? Sorry, second?
Second.
A second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Three?
SD 2445, major subdivision.
We have a motion.
Move by Justin.
Move. We have a second. Second, Mr. Meyer. All in favor? Aye.
And the last one, SD 2405, major site plan.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Move.
Moved by Jakey. Mr. Meyer, we have a second.
All second.
Who's that? Mr. Bruce? Well, Mr. Stern. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay, Ali, we're on to the public hearing now. Are there any changes to the public hearing?
I have two applications tonight that have requested to carry to the March 2nd public hearing date. I would recommend that we make the announcement to carry those with no further notice.
Okay. Julian?
Ali, I couldn't hear you. Say it again.
We have two applications that requested to carry to our next meeting, March 2nd, with no further notice. I would recommend we make the announcement to carry those with no further notice.
Okay.
Okay, Julian, can you make the announcement, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the public, please be aware that the board is hereby determining that SP 2411AA Schmull sensor is going to be adjourned with no further public notice necessary. And this goes for SD 2457 Benjamin 41 Sunset Road that will be adjourned with no further notice necessary.
And the date is the March, is the 2nd. Put on the record.
Yes, both SP 2411AA and SD 2457 are adjourned to March 2nd, 2020, public hearing.
Okay, thank you. So on to number one, Ali.
So just so the boards are aware, Mr. Jackson's office has a conflict on this application. I believe Ms. McClear can leave for the evening. I don't think we need her for anything else in this time. But Mr. Yulaki with Dass Murphy McBuckin is here to fill in the soundless attorney for the board on SP 2350 for DC Commercial. This is a major site plan for a building station located on Ocean Avenue.
Julian, you're stepping down also?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Chairman. Our office does have a conflict on this application, so I will now be stepping down from the dais and signing off.
Okay, thank you very much and good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chairman, I'm table. I've done business with Madison Title before. Am I a conflict?
Not necessarily. This is Bob Yulaki, board conflict attorney. If you don't have a proprietary interest in the subject matter of this application, I would think that you have no conflict of interest.
Okay. Okay, so we'll proceed. We have five members with no conflict. So. Terry, would you like to go through the report, please?
Yes, I would, Chairman. I'm reading from the January 21st, 2021 review. Ali has a copy up on the screen. Beginning on the very bottom of page two, under submission waivers. We have a number of them, property owners within 200 feet, traffic studies, submission to county planning board, site features in the permits. We support the waivers for hearing purposes as indicated in our review.
Okay, do we have a motion to go along with engineer's recommendation?
So move.
But there wasn't notification for this public hearing, or the item number one is not for notification?
Yes. I did this proof of notice. I would assume that the letter is indicating that the list of property owners is not on the plan. It typically is listed on this plan, and it just may not be on this actual piece of paper.
Yeah, just one other thing. This is the condition of the application as of January. It's now mid-February. There's a good chance that that was provided subsequently. Continuing on the bottom page.
No, we didn't vote on it yet. We have a motion? I'm sorry. Do we have a motion to go along with engineer's recommendation? Mr. Sable? Okay, just moves. We have a second.
I'm table.
I'm table seconds. All in favor, to random waivers? Aye. Okay, on to zoning.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm reading from section two, the bottom of page three. For your setback, variances required, 23.3 feet proposed versus 25 feet required. Side yard, 9.2 feet proposed versus 10 foot required. There is an existing sign. Which indicates that the revised submission shows it to be nine feet. Six feet is permitted. However, there's a setback requirement. Joe will give testimony on that, I'm sure, shortly. And then, under section three, design waivers. Are being sought and were with the previous application on this property, SP 2193. The first is sidewalk along the project frontage. And the second is street trees and shade tree utilities along the project frontage.
So Terry, this application was before us already?
Correct. There was an application that was acted upon in the board, I believe, September of 2016. 2193, Ali just put the resolution up here. The original plan was done by PDS Associates. If you look at the revised plan, that's in front of the board by KBA Associates, and Joe's going to testify. They're similar, with one exception. There was an office building originally proposed towards the rear of the property that was said constructed in the front. And the applicant is seeking approval.
It was constructed already, that building?
Is that, is that building?
It's a one-story structure. I should probably be sworn in.
Yeah, can we start the application? Do you mind, Chairman, if we get started?
Not at all. You're the attorney, Mrs. Weinstein?
I am, in fact.
Okay, so Mrs. Weinstein, I'm sorry. Please go ahead.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Miriam Weinstein, on behalf of the applicant, DC Commercial. What we are here for this evening is to seek preliminary and final site plan approval to allow a temporary one-story connected modular building addition at the front of the building to become permanent on the existing two-story Madison Title Agency building that's located on the subject property. Now, there was a previous approval, approval SP 2193, the resolution that Ali posted a few moments ago.
Okay, Mr. Weinstein, just one second. Ali, can you mute anybody besides Mr. Weinstein? There's a lot of feedback. It's very hard to hear. Okay, Mrs. Weinstein, please continue. It's much better.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So getting back to where I was at, the previous approval for SP 2193 was an approval for an addition at the rear of the property that has yet to be constructed. However, this is not, this approval is not in place of that one. The applicant still intends to, at some point, build that addition. What that approval called for, that had an approval for a temporary office trailer. That temporary trailer is the trailer in front that we are now seeking to make permanent. That's actually what we're seeking in this approval. With that, I'd just like to ask that.
Okay, Mrs. Weinstein, if we make the trailer permanent, do we have enough parking? Or you create?
We get there. That's why I need to have Joe sworn.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, Mr. Yulaki, could you please swear?
Yulaki here? Yes. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give tonight is the truth, the whole truth? And recite your name and profession.
He's muted. Mr. Kishuwa, you're muted. We don't hear. Okay, now.
Sorry about that. I do swear, and I'm Joseph Kishuwa, K O C I U V A, KBA Engineering Services, Madison Square, New Jersey, licensed engineer, licensed plant.
Okay, we'll accept you. Please proceed with application.
Certainly. So the application, it's an existing conforming use on the site. And as indicated, the front of the site has a one-story structure that was constructed out of temporary modular buildings that we're seeking to make permanent. That's proposed with a front yard setback of 23.3 feet, where 25 is required, and a side setback of 9.2 feet, where 10 is required. Those are de minimis variances due to the location of the trailer. The trailers were installed sometime the end of 2016 or the beginning of 2017. Obviously, the big question is parking when you include the existing two-story building plus the trailers. The parking requirement for that is 99.6 or 100 parking stalls, and that's under the new office standard, the one, four per thousand. Whereas at the time this was approved, it was three per thousand. The site has 117 full-size parking stalls on the site. At the very rear of the property, Ali, if you can pan up a little bit on the, on the plan there. Along that back line there, there are additional parking stalls. There's a total of 18, what we're calling undersized parking stalls on the site, in addition to the 117 full-size stalls. So when you combine all of them, there's 135 parking stalls on the site where 100 are required. There is no parking variance needed for this. There is ample parking on the site.
Mr. Kishuwa, you said that you plan on building the next building, right?
The plan is to eventually build the next building, build that.
Do you have enough parking for that building? Is that included in the 100 parking space that you need?
That is not included. So what we're looking to do is legalize the trailer as it stands today. If the trailer and that building were both constructed, then I believe there would be a parking deficiency, but the trailer is not going to be there if the addition's built. So that the parking that the trailer sits on today becomes available parking.
So that, is that a condition of approval, that the trailer is permanent until you build the building? Or once you build your building, then you're using it as a parking lot, so you're not gonna have any variance?
Actually, I, I don't think that's, Mr. Kishuwa, I don't think you're correct on that. I think the intention is when we build that building in the back, we're gonna add parking. We will acquire neighboring lots and we'll add parking.
So you're not gonna have, you're not gonna have a variance?
We're not.
We're not going to have a, we are not going to have a parking variance when we put up that building. But we're also not going to be demolishing the trailer. The purpose of this approval is to make the office trailer at the front of the building permanent. In the previous approval, if you read the resolution, you'll note that it did call to demolish this, this trailer at the front when that addition was built in the back. We do not intend to do that, but obviously, if there's a parking deficiency, the applicant will have to come back and show that there is ample parking on neighboring lots.
Mr. and Ms. Weinstein, I'm sorry, but I just need clarification. I don't see how the approval of a new building in the front, which is creating a parking deficiency for the previous approval, is not negating the previous approval, which is now gonna have to come back to the board with a new layout showing where you're putting this supposed new parking on this already full site. You can't, you can't come in with a new approval for the front and then say, but we're still gonna keep the original site plan approval, which doesn't exist anymore because we're changing it.
Yes, I agree. I think all of the parking that's required should be shown at this point. Because that back building to be constructed is approved, and now we're looking to approve the permanent trailer. So all of the parking requirements should be met at this point.
Mr. Yulaki, one second.
The applicant owns the lot next door. The applicant is on. We can certainly have the applicant testify. Mr. Rosenbaum is the applicant. He can testify and tell you he does own that lot next door, and the plan is to put.
I understand that the applicant may be able to accommodate that. However, that's not what the board engineer reviewed. The board engineer reviewed the addition in the front in lieu of the addition in the back, which is why he did not note a parking variance, a parking deficiency. If you're gonna come back at some point and provide additional parking on a different lot, then that's gonna need its own site plan approval anyway. And this addition in the front is thereby negating the addition in the back that was previously approved. You can't just float it and say, we'll come back and fix it later.
Mr. Yulaki, let me ask you. Can we approve it and restrict them that they have to come, they can't start building until they come back and show us the parking? Or it's like Ali says, we negate the whole.
Yeah, you would have to approve a parking variance at this point because they're not showing the required parking spaces.
May I suggest something, Chairman?
Yes. Terry?
We should keep this simple and approve what is in front of the board tonight. If and when they want to revisit that back addition, it's gonna have to be an amended application anyway because you're gonna have to show the adjacent parking and show revised circulation and parking design at that time.
Correct.
I think if the board acts upon this application tonight, it is on what's shown on Mr. Kishuwa's plan and nothing more.
Agreed. So the plan that we have before you is for the existing two-story building and the one-story trailers up front. They have an approval which they're looking to keep in effect for an addition at the rear with no trailer in the front. If, if the applicant in the future wants to have, if he can eat it too, and have a trailer in the front and an office building addition in the back, we're gonna have to come back to you with a new approval that shows how we're gonna comply with parking and layout and circulation. All we're saying is, we don't want to negate the addition approval that we got. But we are asking for today is something completely different just to keep the trailer. We will come back to you with a new application and a new layout if we do seek to do both.
Okay, Mr. Yulaki, is that okay with you?
Yes, that would be fine. So a variance is not required tonight for the parking requirement. But we'll put language in the resolution if the board decides to act on this tonight in a favorable manner to the effect that the back building would require amended approval and the parking would have to meet the requirement at that.
Unless they take, they take down the trailers and make it a parking lot, and they don't need any variance on the existing property. Is that okay?
Yes, that's okay. But again, what they're looking for tonight is a permanent approval for the trailer. But in the future, they could change the plans. It would have to be an amended application for that back building.
Okay.
Two approvals if we get grant approval. Two approvals. One, if they wanted, they can choose whatever they want. They can either keep the back one or do the front one at this point. Leave the trailers or build a new one in the back, which will require them to remove the trailers.
That's what I understand right now, unless they come back to the board and ask for variance.
Can they have two approvals on one lot, on one site? Two active, two active resolutions, two active approvals?
Just be one approval if the board decides to grant approval tonight for what's in front of the.
So I believe we can.
One at a time, one at a time, please.
I think Mr. Sable's question is, does the previous approval become invalidated by this one? Does it need to be vacated?
And it's our opinion that we don't have to vacate the other approval because what our testimony is, is this is to allow this existing condition to continue. There's, the other approval would require changes in the site, including removing the trailers that are noted on the plan for this approval. So I believe both approvals can stick. I don't think there's any reason that we would have to vacate them. If we do propose to still the addition, we would have to remove the trailers and install all the improvements shown in that approval. And if we wanted to make any changes to that, we'd have to come back to you for approval of that change.
I think to keep it very simple. I, I, I think to keep it very simple, it's like Mr. Yulakki said. Right now, it's just for the front building and any other changes on the plan, you're gonna have to have an amended return.
Agreed.
We don't vacate it, but it's gonna have to be amended. You cannot start building until you come back to the board and amend your application.
Yes, I think, Mr. Chairman, that, that, that's, that sounds reasonable to, to the applicant. You're correct that we would, this approval is simply to make the trailer permanent. We're not invalidating the old approval, but it can't be built the way it is. We will have to come back and show you the circulation plan and show you that we'll have additional parking, which we will, because the applicant has since acquired another lot on which he's going to place that park.
Okay, Mr. Yulakki, are you okay with that?
Yes, I am.
Mr. Yulakki, timetable. Um, what, how long does an approval, once, once the planning board gives the approval for an application? How long does that approval valid? Is that forever or they have to start building at a certain time?
Well, as long as there's no change in zoning, it's approved.
Right. I, I, I don't think there's any limit. If there's a change of zone, I think, Mr. Yulakki, correct me if I'm wrong. Even if there's a change of zoning, they, they grandfathered him for five years, up to five years. But if there's a change, uh, am I correct on that?
They would then have to, uh, the current zoning, after passage of time.
Okay. Um, so, Mr. Keshuva, could you put the reasons for you asking the variances on the record?
Certainly. We have the front yard setback variance inside, as I indicated. We also require relief for the existing sign, uh, as indicated, the high sign does require relief. Six feet required, or six feet is permitted, as well as the setback zero feet that exists where fifteen feet is required. It's an existing sign that has been there for many, many years, uh, and it doesn't affect the landscape.
Mr. Keshuva, everything that you're requesting, any variance, is all existing as of now, right?
All exists there today. So we're, we're asking for relief from the traffic report, updating the survey, adding stormwater, all that stuff we'll do if we build the addition. All we wanna do is keep what we got.
You're not changing anything, no, no, you're not renting out anything more. Everything is staying the exact way it was till now.
The only change we're making is right now, the handicap parking on the site is pretty, uh, pretty poor. We're making, we're restryping the handicap parking in the front to make it legal. Beyond that, we're not proposing any changes. Uh, we're not changing any grading, we're not changing any drainage, no changes to landscaping. Uh, we request a relief for all that stuff. We wanna keep what we have.
And you understand, Yulakki, we spoke with Mrs. Weinstein before. Should you wanna build a back building, you're gonna have to come back with an amended return.
Correct. We'll come back and show you either the original approval with no changes or if we wanna keep the trailer, we gotta show you how we make all the parking and layout work.
Okay.
Excuse me, Chairman?
Yes, Terry.
Yeah, um, one recommendation, Joe, uh, the undersized parking in the back. Uh, would it make sense to make those spaces employee-only, perhaps even compact cars? If there is such a thing in Lakewood. You know, just because, you know, you, you, you have substandard spaces.
Yeah, Terry, I, I would just add to it. If, if they have to come back with an amended return and that they're talking about having the next property next door that they can add parking to it, try to get me regular-sized parking. People in Lakewood need wide, wide parking spaces to get in and out.
I agree with you a hundred percent, Chairman. In the event that this site is gonna operate for a period of time until they come back, that may be something that you look at practically in the interim.
And again, our testimony is ample parking without that. I have no objection making that strip in the back employee-only.
Thank you.
We have no issue. And if the, if the board wants to hear from the applicant, the applicant is on and can certainly testify as to the operations that are going on there now and how this is functioning.
Okay. Um.
Do you want me to call Mr. Rosenbaum?
Uh, I, I don't think it's necessary unless any board, unless he wants to speak. Man, I know the application, I've been there, so I know that it works. Uh, do any board members have any questions from the applicant?
Yeah, it, it's timetable. I wrote, I'm looking at the resolution for the previous application. Uh, it reads very clear, where, where did I see it before? When we gave them the approval, it was a condition of timing.
Correct. That's, that's exactly why we're, we're here. There was a timing, uh, it was earlier.
I agree the removal of this trailer within thirty days of the CFO or three years after construction, whichever date comes first. Which construction are they, they referring to? The construction of the back building?
Of the back building, and it hasn't happened yet. So they have neither gotten the CO nor have they commenced construction. So actually, that hasn't passed, but that's really why we're here today, because.
Why, why can we extend this approval? Why do we have to make it permanent? Just continue it the way it is. Nothing will change. We extend the, the temporary permit or, or temporary relief, the lease this building out of it and not make it, it permanent.
Because who can really wants to keep it permanently?
We have an issue with the permanent.
I don't think the building code would allow us to do that. I don't believe the building code would allow us to continue a temporary CO indefinitely.
Ma, ma, Mr. Sable, i- if they make this tra, this modular building, uh, permanent and the variances are the minimus, it's only one foot on each side, it's less than a foot, it's the minimus. And, and they are restricted right now. They cannot build the back building until they have an amended return. And if they can't come back with amended return, this stays permanent and they can't build a building. So why shouldn't, why shouldn't we, what, we, we don't lose anything by making it permanent?
Chairman, with all due respect, this building comes out, they're requesting a twenty-three feet, uh, front step, step back where none of the buildings on that block stick out towards the street so much.
But, but it's, twenty-five is required. I think that twenty-three point five, it's a foot and a half. It's not thirty foot over there that, that's needed.
I'm looking comparing to other buildings next door or further down. It looks, if you show that, it's the minimum. But, yeah, I mean, looking apparently at the other buildings on Google Maps. I know this site, I've been there before. But I, I don't know if putting it permanent, the look of it, on a permanent, keeping it permanent like that. It's AC on the roof, it bothers, it, it's just, it's a trailer, it's not a building. Not a shiva where we have to have a little hamunah and we have to think. It's a big building, it's, it's a professional buil, business. Of course, they're gonna try to get it.
What, through the chair?
Yes, Mr. Stern.
What's the obje, I mean, I've been in that trailer. It's nicer than ninety percent of the buildings in Lakewood. It's gorgeous. What's the objection of the trailer other than maybe the exterior?
I'm, I'm referring to the exterior.
And, and the, the exterior, I would, I would ask them, I see the exterior now. To dress it up, if you make it a modular building, you know, to finish it up a little, to, to make it look like a regular building.
And the applicant has spent some, uh, some effort to do so, added a bunch of landscaping along the front. You know, the handicap ramps on the front, they, uh, they put that, the bushes and the, uh.
Oh, look at the monument sign. The monument sign that. The monument sign is gorgeous, and look at the flowers.
So our, our intent was to try and keep all that the way it is. They, they did try and dress it up. They, they didn't just leave it bare a, as a trailer sticking out. They wanted to make it a permanent part of these streets.
Chaim, you want them to paint it to match the building? What would you like?
Uh, not, not so, a little more appealing, not so, uh, I drive past there a lot of times and I've been, and not in this trailer, I've been to the back building. It, it is eyesore.
Unless you make stucco in the front.
And, and the air conditioning in the top, it, 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 I don't know. If, if they're doing it permanent, let, let's do it the right way.
Joe, how hard would it be to kinda do some, um, I don't know, privacy fencing of the HVAC on the roof? I, I don't know if that's gonna make it look that much prettier though. It's gonna actually draw attention to it.
It's gonna look worse, I think.
It'll look worse.
Exactly. You would add a, a vinyl, uh, screening up there that's gonna draw a bright white attention to it rather than.
I agree.
So you see it kinda melts into the roof behind.
Through, through the chair, this is Justin.
Yeah.
Through the chair, this is Justin. I, 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 I understand, uh, Mr. Sable's concern regarding the aesthetics of the trailer. I, I mean, that's, that's a subjective opinion. I think that, uh, to me, the trailer, it's not, it's, it's, it's dressed up like Bruce was saying. You have landscaping around the trailer. It, this, the property is very clean, the site is very neat.
Uh, look on the next properties, this is beautiful.
Let's, let's not, I, I understand his opinion. It's, it's a subjective opinion. There, we have the aesthetic standard that we have to go by, by the ordinance. I, I don't, I, I don't think that we should subject the owner to start renovating the, the existing building. I think it looks fine. It's, it's, it's a nice building and it works well.
Okay, I see across the street all these buildings also very close.
I agree with Justin a hundred percent, and let's understand where we are. This is auto row. Um, this is not the most scenic, um, stretch in Lakewood. So candidly, I think Madison tile is probably.
The nicest piece on the whole block.
The nicest piece on the whole block, so let's, let's be happy and move on.
I, I think so. Mr. Rosenbaum, he did, did a great job in keeping it nice and clean. Okay, any other questions from any board members?
I, I still think we can do, we can make it a little profession, more professional, because this is staying here forever. And I think that was a concern in two thousand and sixteen during the original approval, why the board didn't give them a, a permanent den, and they were very insisting and putting in the words of three years after construction. They were not comfortable and to give it permanent at the time as well.
Chaim, what are you asking for?
Take it look a little better, look a little more professional. And, and, I don't know. Better, a better circulation, uh, sidewalk to the building from.
I have, I have a great idea. Chaim, Chaim, I have a great idea if I can. Why don't we task the board engineer to work in good faith with, um, the applicant's engineers to, as we say.
To make it look like a permanent building.
Put some lipstick on the pig.
Interesting way of saying it, yeah. And, for, for example, a better circulation, a sidewalk leading from the trailer to the middle building. I've seen people walk all the time out of the trailer, walk onto the, onto the driveway, uh, back to, to the building in the back. I've seen it with files and folders. I, I think if we can do a better circulation, a better, if we're doing it permanent, let's do it the right way.
Mrs. Weinstein, are you, is your client amenable to having our engineer work with your engineer to, uh, do some aesthetics that would, uh.
Enhance the building.
Enhance the looking, building on the margin?
I assume so, but I'd actually rather have him affirm that answer the question himself.
No problem.
Can we trust Mr. Rosenbaum at this point?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Yulakki, could you affirm Mr. Rosenbaum, please?
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give tonight? The whole truth, please give your name and address for the record.
Joseph Rosenbaum, eleven twenty-five Ocean Avenue, Lakewood, New Jersey.
Okay, Mr. Rosenbaum, please proceed.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosenbaum, I, I, I guess you've been hearing, um, what the, what the, one, one of the board members has been, um, making requests possibly that you dress up the trailer a little bit. Would you have a problem if the board engineer was to work with your engineer to figure out a way to dress that up a little bit?
It would be very much my pleasure.
Okay, thank you. But is, Mr. Rosenbaum, is, is there anything you would like to add to?
I, I think from a, I think just from a practical matter, um, I subsequently purchased the lot, adjoining lot next door on the right side of the building and.
It's a big open lot right now.
Yeah, so it's another two acres. I, I bought that property. I also bought the next property. So, and the reason I did that was so that I should have additional overflow parking. Should I ever want to, you know, when we, if we were to ever have large events. Um, I, I wanna, I'm operating this business in Lakewood now for over twenty years. So it, it's great to get an approval, but at the same time, as an owner, I wanna make sure that it works. There's nobody more than me that wants to make sure that this works. And for that reason, I bought this extra lot and, you know, it's been really working well. In fact, a lot of the, a lot of the, uh, people that are working in this trailer, I, we even opened up another entrance so that those people can have access to be able to park on the new lot to take away the traffic and people walking out onto the.
I think you have, Mr. You have, you have a ramp on the back of that trailer, no?
We have a ramp on back of the trailer. We also have an entrance between the, between the building and the trailer. There's another entrance right there, yep. And, 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 and that leads out to the empty lot. So from a, as a practical matter, we've, you know, there's, there's a tremendous amount of fog. Also have another entrance leading out a little further down, somewhere in middle of the, uh, in middle of the main building, leading into that, leading into that lot right there, yep.
Right where it says two-story.
Exactly. So we have additional parking in many, many, you know, many different areas. We probably have another couple of hundred spots on this new lot that we, that we acquired. So as a practical matter, it really flows very well. Um, you know, we're certainly happy to, um.
Mr. Rosenbaum, let me ask you, you, this whole building is for your business?
Uh, from various different businesses that we have, yeah.
Yeah, but it's all your businesses?
Correct.
And, and you're not renting out this for your businesses and you know your need. You're staying, you're owning it, you're staying, and you know your need. And you say it works.
We host some nonprofits from time to time, but, but for the most part, it's, uh, it's, it's all my own operation.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Uh, I would open up to the public right now. Ally, is there anybody from the public who would like to?
I did receive one, one emailed comment from Mr. Zynus. Um, it's up on the screen. I'll read it for you. It says, "Hi, in a previous application for this site, Abe Penzer told the board there's a parking issue on the site and the applicant is aware of the issue. From Terry's review letter, it appears the applicant has since then failed to do anything about his parking issue. I urge the board to get this applicant to get sufficient parking on his property. I also urge the board to require a sidewalk and not to grant any sidewalk waivers. I know that there are car lots on both sides, however, the site still needs sidewalk respectfully, Mo's designs." That's the only public comment that I received. And I'm gonna stop sharing my screen so I can look real quick and see. I don't see any unidentified callers who may be waiting to speak on this application either.
Okay, and I think Mr. Rosenbaum addressed the issue with parking, saying that he has ample parking for what he needs. And should he need more, he owns the next property. So I, I doubt, that, I don't think it's an issue. Uh, I'll close, yes, I'll close, let me close it. I'm closing it to the public right now, just to Sable.
On the approval for the back building, for the, the construction of the additional building, does that require them to put sidewalk in the front?
No, waiver was granted at the time for that.
Okay, good. And, and maybe, maybe the applicant or somebody can explain. If a handicap parking, if handicap, uh, client comes in, parks in that handicap area, how do they get to the ramp in the front? They actually have to get onto the driveway. There's no sidewalk leaning from that building, from the parking lot till the, uh, trailer in front, which is in front of it.
So there's five feet of space around the entire, uh, parking area that's in the kinda U of the building. Um, there's ample room to access where those handicap parking stalls are. On the plan that's before the board, correct, our plan?
Yep.
Correct. So that there is ample space, that, that area that Ally's indicating there is, uh, is open to circulate around those stalls. You can access the two-story building. And, and as the applicant indicated, there's an interior connection between, uh, the one-story office and the two-story. So that is all compliant with, uh, the codes for handicap parking.
So why do we need that ramp in the front of the trailer?
The ramp in the front of the trailers is just a ramp to a rear door that provides a handicap accessible ramp around the side of the building. I, I believe at the time, there was not a connection between the two.
Yeah, and Mr. Sable, Mr. Rosenbaum testified that, uh, he is, he has more parking on the right properties, so the ramp. If anybody's handicap could go out straight to the back and park the car there.
The ramp leads to the front, Mr. Chairman. From the building.
It's coming down, okay.
Going down to the front.
There's ample aisle width there as well to be compliant with the ADA, uh, requirement.
I'm sorry, Mr. I missed that one.
I said there's ample aisle width through there as well. So the, the aisle requirement there is twenty-four feet by ordinance. The, the aisle there is twenty-eight feet wide from the last parking stall to the curb. So there is ample room if someone had to, uh, go along the face of that curb towards the front. So there is ample room if someone had to go along the face of that curb towards the front building. There is ample room for that. But again, by, by code, that's not required if the two buildings are connected.
I think the sidewalk over there, because I've seen employees walking on the, on that, coming out of the trailer and walking on the street. I haven't seen any wheelchair people do that. But I, I, I think that'll be nice. I don't know, we don't need it by code, but if we need it by code, I think we have to put that in.
Mr. Kishuva, you, you muted. I see you talking.
So I, I missed that question, but.
He's talking about the sidewalk in the, on the, in the front of the building.
So inside of the building, in the.
Right.
So through there.
The front.
Yeah, the applicant could add a sidewalk through there if it's necessary.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from any board members? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion on this application.
I'll move it.
Mr. Stern moves, do we have a second?
Second by Justin.
Justin's second, roll call, please.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Sable?
Yes.
Mr. Flansbrough?
Yes.
Mr. Herzl?
Yes.
And Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Stern, I just want to make sure that your, your approval included a sidewalk for the ADA and to do some exterior imperfections.
Yes, subject to the mutual agreement between the applicant's engineer and the board's engineer.
And also subject that they have to come for amendment if they want to build a back building. Everything that we spoke about, Mr. Stern, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Do we have any, you have any minutes?
Yes.
Okay, approval of the minutes, we have a motion for the minutes.
Moved by Justin.
Moved, all second, all in favor.
Aye.
Approval of bills?
So moved.
Moved, second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Yulak.
Yeah, good night.
Take care, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Okay, good night.